Hello, welcome. And what happens when they show up? If you're on time, you're late already.
I would wish. She owns a big man's house. And they start airing out this time of the year.
To Clyde Ross, a resident of the town of Farmington in the county of Franklin in the state of Maine. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the voters of the town of Farmington, qualified to vote, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to assemble at the Farmington Town Office at 153 Farmington Falls Road in said town on Thursday, the 13th of November, 2025, at seven o'clock in the evening, then and there to act upon Articles One and Two. The Articles being set up below to which? First, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Are there nominations for a moderator?
I'm Nate Paul Mills.
I know, Nate Paul Mills.
Are there other nominations?
Nomination cease.
I need to have three written ballots for Mr. Mills. So I'll need three volunteers to come up and write his name on a slip of paper. That means on Mr. Mills. There were three votes passed, all through Mr. Mills.
Yes.
I call Mills.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state.
Notice.
So long as I shall continue assisting their love.
I.
Do swear that I will faithfully discharge, with the best of my abilities, to do as incumbent upon me as an ordinary.
On me as moderate.
Appoint the Constitution and law of the state.
Good evening. Well, it's grand time to see such a robust turnout tonight. And we'll proceed with the business at hand. Article Second, shall the town vote to approve the use of $700,000? And by the way, just a preliminary procedural motion, Mr. Smith almost forgot.
I'd make the motion that we allow non-resident department heads and the town manager to.
Is that second? Those in favor of that particular motion, signified by putting hand up. And appear to be a vote. So, shall the town vote to approve the use of $700,000 from the undesignated fund balance by the Board of Selectmen to reduce the amount of property taxes to be collected to fund the year 2025 budget in an effort to stabilize the tax rate in a manner consistent with prudent fiscal management? First of all, can we have a motion on the article?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion, explanation, comments. The floor is open.
Go ahead. Just if I could have a question as to why this is needed?
The question has been asked, why is this needed? Does anyone from the administration or otherwise wish to respond to that particular inquiry? The town manager, Erica LaRoe.
So per the statement of fact below, you can see that the town had.
Erica, could you speak up a little bit?
I apologize. Per the statement of fact at the bottom of the warrant article, the town set the mill rate on October 14th based on the information that we had at the time for the numbers that we needed in order to set a mill rate. We did not have access to the new, it's called a CANA system, but what it is, is your assessing system. Then we also did not have the ability to look at that system until well after that mill rate was set. So based on the best information we had, the mill rate was set at 981. As we prepared for tax bills based on that 981, it became apparent that using the 981 mill rate was going to bring us in 2.2 million dollars shy of what we needed to cover the budget. And this is the budget that the townspeople voted on in March. So that budget has not changed. So we still need to cover that. At the meeting last week on Tuesday, the board opted to not go with the mill rate that should have been. Had we had the correct information to begin with, the mill rate would have been set at $11.70. That's the mill rate that we need to cover our budget. As it is, the announcement of the 981 mill rate is what everyone was expecting. And some people had already done their own calculations and figured out what they were going to have to pay based on that. And rather than go with a mill rate that was $1.90 higher, the board opted to go in the middle and set the mill rate at 1050, still less than what we need to cover the budget. That leaves us $1.3 million shy of what we need to cover the budget. We are liquidating a $600,000 investment account to cover almost half of that. But we still need to take $700,000 from the undesignated general fund to cover the remainder. That is beyond what the select board is granted to do based on the articles that were presented last, last March. And that's why we're coming to you as the townsfolk to approve us to use that $700,000.
Clarification? Go ahead. Just two short points. One, the flyer that was sent out referenced wrong numbers by KRT.
So the number that was wrong was the Homestead number. So because we couldn't access any of the systems, what we asked for, we asked KRT to provide us with the real estate valuation, the personal property valuation, the Homestead exemption value, and the business equipment tax exemption value. The response we got was a spreadsheet from the president that said the real estate values are attached in the spreadsheet, totals are at the bottom. There is a column in that spreadsheet labeled exemptions. The value at the bottom of that column was 380-some million. I don't have the exact number in front of me. That is a way overstated number. And what that number does is because the state reimburses 75% of that value, it takes that out of what we have to raise in the taxes. So when that number's wrong, we aren't raising enough to cover our burden. So.
No, this is poor. I had to hand up first with everybody too. So I'll just try to give everybody a chance. Go ahead. Yes, Nancy, you.
We've got $700,000 here. If it's applied towards the taxes that are, or it's applied to what is going to make the budget work, is it $700,000 right off the top? Or is it going to be the 7,000 cover, 70,000, 700,000, what do we call, cover any abatements?
No, it covers the budget, period. The tax bills that went out right now, what you've got is what you're going to have. You can apply for an abatement. There does have to be a justification behind the abatement. So you have to present evidence for your case. And the reason I want to make that clear is because we have the abatement forms here tonight for people who want to file an abatement. But filing one is not the same as being granted one. You still have to go through the process where all of that information gets reviewed and have a meeting with the assessor with the information that you've come up with. So I don't want to set the expectation that you fill one of these out and your taxes are going to go down because that's not necessarily the case. And it's important to note that the numbers that were correct, or at least largely correct, we know we've had some errors and there always are in a revaluation. But the real estate number itself, the value of real estate was correct. So it's not that number that was wrong. And again, the only thing that ended up wrong and the reason that we're here tonight is we miscalculated the mill rate. That doesn't mean that the taxes themselves were miscalculated. We hadn't sent out your bills yet. And it doesn't mean that the values placed on property are wrong. It means that what we put in that was going to be reimbursed by Homestead was wrong.
Yeah, but a number of people, Trudy, John.
So, so some of our properties are 20, 40 acres more than what we actually own, that what actually your tax bills are. So that will greatly affect your budget, money that the taxes coming in. What will you do about that? Also, there's a lot of mistakes. We have houses that we don't even own that's attached to our land value. And so that will greatly, will greatly change the amount of, of probably millions.
It's going to take a lot to make up millions, but that's all part of the abatement process. That's not part of this process here tonight.
Your budget.
It actually doesn't affect our budget. The budget was set a long time ago. What it means is that our revenues will be less than what we had planned on. At that point in time, if we, we don't know where we're going to end up at year end. If we spend everything that we budgeted, that could mean that we take another hit to our fund balance. But if we're conservative, and I did put everybody in a spending freeze the minute we heard about this, we are not spending anything other than our necessary operating expenses at this time. We're hoping to have monies left over that will further offset that. Also, in voting on the 700,000 tonight, that's the maximum that you are allowing as the townspeople. If we don't need the full 700,000, we would not take the full 700,000 out of the undesignated fund balance.
Bill Crandall.
Yes. First, I've watched the October 14th meeting and November 4th or 3rd, I'm not sure what day. But first of all, I, I know this was a tough situation. I know that, you know, you came to the meeting with your hand in your hat, or hat in your hand. I wanted to thank the selectmen for selecting an option that was more reasonable than jumping to the 1170. But we're going to be seeing this next year. We're still going to have this bite, and it's going to bite us next year. But I do want to thank you all for trying to look at the best way to come forward. I do still have some questions about some of the errors. I know that Dennis had mentioned at the meeting, one of the meetings, that they were changing staff, people in the field. There were, there were people coming and going, they were late on things. So my question would be if they were wrong on numbers to the town, you know, why, it could be easily be wrong numbers from, from the field. And one of the concerns I had, I had to go and fight them a little bit with my properties. And they would look at land like it was two dimensional without looking at whether it was undevelopable or it was in a floodplain. And we've got farmers that could be put out of business if they have to pay the kind of value that they were placing on, on those land values. And that is a concern of mine because that land could be transferred into something else that the town may not want to have. So the land values, in my case, there were a couple of them that went over 400, 400% in value from what they were. And some of it I don't agree with, but that, that seems to be where the biggest increases in my properties were. So what I guess I'm saying is that anybody that has a, their tax bill, it's not quite the same as it was last year by a lot. I think those are the ones that are going to want to look for an abatement because it is out of whack. But I do want to thank you all that are sitting at the table for what your efforts were. I know it has to be hard. I do think that it's also a time, given what we're looking at, a time to reconsider some of our capital purchases. You know, you spoke about a ladder truck, for example. And I think maybe it's a time to consider maybe not doing that. Make it a seven-year plan instead of a five-year plan. You know, Wilton has the ladder truck, we've got a platform truck. It seems like this may be, I think it was Randy, he said, we're not going to be doing business as usual until this is straightened out. So I think that's something the selectmen will need to be thinking about. Even, I know you can't do it for this year because we're close to the end of the year. But before we purchase something else, we, we might want to put a stop to it until this is straightened out. And I know you also went into the new fiscal year, which complicates this for the taxpayers. It may not complicate it for you guys. But now we won't know what our real tax bill is for this next year, which I think is going to be a tough one. And my understanding from the meetings is the first half of that bill that we're going to be getting is going to be less than the second half because you're going to try to lighten the load on, on that, which is fine. But, but people should realize it's not going to be half their bill. So anyway, I wanted to thank you all for trying to work through this. But I do want you guys thinking out of the box. And I think some of our capital expenditures might need to be looked at.
Josh Bell.
So a few things I wanted to break up.
Josh, could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, in regards to tonight's meeting, I'm not sure why we're having the meeting tonight because at our annual town meeting, Article 21 was passed. And there's no sum designated in that. It just says deemed necessary by the Board of Selectmen to reduce the amount of property taxes. So I'm just curious why the board and the town manager deemed that we needed to have the meeting when they have the authority already given to them back in March. And then the other, for statement of fact, technically the selectmen don't set the mill rate. It is the tax assessor based off the numbers. And in the past, when we set, had the meeting to discuss two different options, tax financing district, taking money from the downtown tip, and then also for overlay, which pays for abatements when people obviously have won their abatement and the town owes them money back. But in regards to that, whole point is previous tax assessors have just adjusted the mill rate to be the exact number. So I'm just curious why we're actually having this meeting tonight. It's fine. I'm glad everybody gets to come and voice their concerns and share with people. Because I think a lot of people have concerns about their tax bills. But I just, somebody could explain that to me, why we're even having this meeting. It'd be great.
Comment on that particular question?
I was under the understanding that we only had 300,000 and some change available for the selectmen to use as emergency funds, which is where we're at. That's why we called for the meeting.
My understanding as well, that I thought we were limited on how much we could expect out of it.
And I think we're, I think we're here because we published a mill rate that was, was an error. It was a mill rate, a mill rate that was wrong. And then we needed to create, we needed to establish a new mill rate granted from the information given by the tax assessor. We still had to, under these circumstances, we had to establish one. And it was either going to be the, the one that is, was absolutely correct mathematically, which was the $11.70, or another figure that, that will satisfy the budget. I think that we felt people had a right to come and exercise their, their free speech and their angst. Even though.
Very diplomatic.
Even though tonight, unless we want our mill rate to be $11.70, we need the authority to.
Follow-up question? Yeah, Josh.
So in regards to that, though, you've sent out all the bills to everybody and you have the 10.5. So if it gets voted down tonight, then you're going to have to issue out all new tax bills to everybody and it's going to cost the town dollars as well.
That is correct.
Right, so.
Gentlemen in the back have been patiently waiting with his hand up for quite a while now. Go ahead.
So I don't want to derail the conversation. I appreciate everybody that's here, the selectmen and the town managers. Giving us all the opportunity to come and ask questions tonight.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, sure. So I just had a couple of questions. Is there, is there a representative from KRT here this evening?
No, because this meeting was about approving extra funds for the budget, not technically about the revaluation.
So it is, it is painstakingly obvious to anybody who looks at the bills, especially if you have woodlots or if you have farm locations. And from talking with KRT representatives during the, during the process that they set up for people to share their concerns about the initial evaluations, that they did not set foot on land that they reevaluated. They did not look at the acreage. They did not look at the physical characteristics of the land. And they also evaluated woodlands, open space, tree growth, and other, other parcels using the assumption of base lot value and all the additional acreage at $2,000. I told Frank when I talked to them today that they did a very, very poor job. So my, my thought, and, and I won't go any longer, is anybody in town leadership looking at what we spent for a very, very flawed evaluation and looking to recover any of those funds? Because KRT is a financial business. They have got to have insurance for large mistakes because they do occur from time to time. But this entire process, from what I can gather from talking to many other taxpayers, from talking to Frank, and from my own experience, is they did very little boots-on-the-ground evaluation, especially of land parcels. My thought is that there ought to be some mechanism that a town can use to try to recover at least a portion of the fee that we paid to them in order to help close part of this gap. And to me, I look at it as, as taxpayers and as selectmen, you're fighting a very uphill battle with the mill rate that you set with erroneous information. We receive mistaken valuation. My brother had a parcel of land that is in front of an open space that mysteriously shrouded a building that was worth $843,000 according to KRT. They obviously did not set foot on that parcel because there are no buildings on that piece of land. I'm sorry I've gone on so long, but my hope is that as leaders of the town, you're at least exploring the potential of gouging back some of the hard-earned tax dollars that went to pay a company that did a very, very flawed job.
So, so do you want to respond to that? Go ahead.
Well, he's asked a question. It's a valid question.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
We, and I'm sorry to, to offer, try to be quick. So we have paid about two-thirds of the contract. I have a bill sitting on my desk that has not been paid. We will be having meetings with KRT. They have a different view of what they have done, clearly. We're not going to be able to comment about a lot of that because it will end up being a legal issue. But we aren't done here. That's what I can tell you. The contract itself does call for all disputes to be settled by an arbitrator. So that, that's the road that we're. The fact that we have a problem has not been lost on us. I can tell you that for me personally, my lack of sleep and my, my pit in the bottom of my stomach over all of this is worth more than what the contract is to me. So it's, we have an issue.
Follow-up? Yes.
So thank you. I appreciate that. And that gives me confidence that, that you're at least exploring that option to help protect the taxpayers. That's awesome. Thank you. One other thing I want to mention is Frank.
You're talking about, for those of you who don't know, that's the first name of the assessor. Go ahead.
Frank is awesome to deal with. He, he unfortunately is overwhelmed. And if there's any way to get him some additional support with all of the things he's doing, he could really, I spent some time with him today and he's, he's trying his level best to do everything he can. I think he's a super awesome guy. I think, I looked at him and I was like, I said, I am glad I do not have your job. And I just think if we can, if there's anybody that's qualified, anybody that's willing to help support him, I bet he'd really appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
Yes, Conrad?
So we've had this reevaluation and a major raise of our value of the town and of its assets. So then we set this mill rate based upon that, and it's wrong. What's going to happen in the future when you have this evaluation that's not even close? I mean, I've got a land that tripled. These people have got landed at 10 times the value of what it was. And that's all I hear. So what's going to happen when we go to abatement? And I say, this land is infamed. And you're saying it's worth commercial value or swamp land. And you're trying to charge, you know, say it's worth 2,000 millimeter. It's not. So you're going to lose. It's going to get worse. You know, it's going to get worse because it doesn't take a rocket scientist to take in, you know, floodplain, you know, maps and all that. And so people that it's not 2,000 millimeter with respect to a brook and all these things. And so these are just some of the things that are coming. So this is why it's a big issue with what this whole thing is. This is not, this is far from over, even with what you're doing right now, trying to pay this money, take the $700,000, sell it. It's not going to solve. It's going to get a lot worse.
Dick Morton?
So I agree, I agree with that to an extent. And with regard to the bigger abatement question that came up earlier, we have to pay the current budget at the moment that we, that we approved in March, that covers the town's expenditures from last January 1st to this coming December 31st. As this abatement process goes on, those numbers are going to come up, as you're alluding to, they're going to, they're going to come up in 2026. And as we're dealing with that budget, we're going to have to address that issue. If the overall value of the town didn't actually go up 110%, if it went up 100% or 90.
50%.
Well, I doubt that. Well, I doubt that. But I mean, there's a lot of people with a lot of issues. But there are also a lot of people with, with regular downtown properties, house, land.
They went lower.
Your taxes went down, their taxes stayed the same. And there's, that's a lot of money. Those people represent a large percentage of the overall budget. So yes, abatements, if they come in and as they're approved, they are going to result in lower revenue going forward. And we're gonna have to address that. Eleven dollar and seventy cent mill rate.
You think it's gonna cover it?
Well, I don't know. It might, but it might. It's, it's probably gonna be in that range. But we don't know if the value, if, as, if, as you say, the value of the town ends up not being up one hundred and ten percent, but some, some number less than that, ninety percent, ninety-five percent more, then the next budget is gonna have to deal with it, and the budget after that. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be a struggle. But what's, what we're gonna have to do.
That's all I just, you know.
The town manager, Erica, go ahead.
So if I can make a clarification, because we need to separate the budget from the mill rate. These are two completely separate issues. What's going to happen with your abatements is that will result in new values. Okay? So when we go to prepare the next budget, when you vote on the six-month budget in March, we should have the abatement process completed by then, except for if we have some really complicated ones that there's, we're having trouble coming to agreement upon. Those new values will be what is used to determine what the mill rate is on that six-month budget. And as was already pointed out, that mill rate is not going to be indicative of what your next full year budget is, which will start for July one. But every year, the budget is the budget. So you all vote at the budget at town meeting. You're authorizing us to expend whatever that vote is. We take the value at that time, and that's how we come up with the mill rate. So it's the budget divided by the, the value. That comes up with a mill rate. That's how we determine what the mill rate's gonna be. If all things were equal this year, everything else being equal, your bills all would have gone up three percent because our budget increased three percent. Okay?
Can I just, can I just?
Just let her finish for a second, Chris.
So if only, the budget really is what is determining where your tax bill is, other than how your value is in relation to other people. So if you're valued higher than a lot of your neighbors, yes, your tax bill will be higher. Overall, though, we still have, as selectman Morton was alluding to, we have at least a third of the people, even at the ten fifty rate, that their bills are lower than last year. There's a lot of people in this room that are being negatively impacted, but we have thirty-two hundred tax bills that go out. And how many people are in this room? My guess is a lot of the people that had their bills go down or are roughly the same as last year aren't here because they aren't upset about it. So to try and look at this room and go, this is indicative of the entire population, is a little bit skewed. So, and, and that doesn't make your personal issue any, any better. Right? And we need to go through the abatement process, and particularly when we're talking about buildings that shouldn't be there, that don't exist, buildings that really belong on my neighbor's property and they didn't get it right. Those things will actually be pretty easy to sort out in an abatement process. And I have talked to Frank and indicated that where we have issues like that, he is to go out to those properties personally and set eyes on them. We thought we were paying for that. We didn't get that in some cases. In some cases, there's, there's, I would love to stand here and defend and try to say that, oh, yes, they, they did that because that was their contract. And I don't want to get too far down the weeds into throwing them under the bus. But there have been a couple of issues that have come up that make it quite obviously that not every property was looked at.
So just, I just wanted to make a comment, though. You said some people in town, which is great, and I'm glad. But mine at the ten mill rate is doubling. I'm paying twice this year what I paid last year. Twice.
Yeah.
So.
And there's no way that a farm can handle that.
Well, I would be close to a hundred and twenty thousand.
Ben.
No, we're not at the, at that mill rate. At that mill rate, we're between sixty and seventy thousand.
Fall, Ben?
We're borrowing one point three million dollars from our savings. Is there a strategy to pay that back over what period of time?
You can, go ahead.
So that's undesignedated fund balance, Ben. So the only way that you can put money back into your undesignedated fund balance is by not spending your entire budget or by gaining revenues above and beyond what you thought you were going to. So the townspeople don't get to vote on revenue budget because those are projections. But we have a projection, and they are used to offset what we need to raise in taxes. So we're guessing that we're gonna have three point five million dollars in non-tax revenue, which will be things like your excise, revenue sharing, other things that come in from the state. And it comes in higher than that. That difference, plus whatever we don't spend of our budget, if we have anything left over, that's the only way to make that fund balance go up. There is no mechanism in the main state law that allows us to replenish that. The six hundred thousand is not a savings per se. That is money that was set aside years and years ago. None of us can find any paperwork on what the purpose was behind it. My guess is it was undesignedated fund balance that we wanted earning some interest monies. And so one of my predecessors set that money aside. But we don't have any documentation that says that's where, that was. Where Tammy, the treasurer, and I have tried to find documents on all of those types of accounts, and it's a little sparse. That said, it, it doesn't, that six hundred thousand is not part of the one point three that I'm overly concerned with. The seven hundred thousand does bring us slightly below where we should be for our bond rating. And, you know, if you go too low, it can result in not getting bonds when you apply for them. But right now, we're, we're only slightly below. So if we can be as conservative as possible, which we try to be anyway, I hate saying that because I go over everything that comes across our payables with a fine-tooth comb. Ed Proventur's sitting in the audience, and he can tell you, sometimes I give him ridiculous things to reclassify, and it probably looks stupid because I'm saying this is a fifty-dollar charge in the wrong account. But I am that nitpicky. I've given them eight-dollar things that have to be reclassified because it's the wrong account. I drive everyone nuts with that kind of stuff. So I really look at everything pretty hard already. But we'll, we're gonna be looking even harder this time. Doesn't mean that we're going to shirk on things, or at least what I recommend for the budget. Things that we actually need, that we really need to operate, I'm not gonna be proposing that we lower those. But capital was mentioned. We do have a plan to delay some of our capital. The pumper truck, or the ladder truck, that's not coming due until 2029 anyway. And it's really not affected by what we're talking about tonight. Again, we're looking at the overall budget. So if we were to have the next budget be roughly the same as it is now, with whatever cost of, not cost of living, CPI increases, consumer price index increases, because we can't get away from those. If we were to continue with a modest increase in the budget of two to three percent going forward, it's really no different than it was before. The debacle is this year that some people have seen their properties increase in value far beyond the average. Okay? And so for those of you who are in that situation, the bill is, is dramatic, and it's scary, and I understand that. So we'll have to go through the abatement process to figure out where those are. But subsequent budgets going forward, the reason that we're gonna try to spend less is just to keep that mill rate from bouncing up immediately because the statement was already made, the next budget, the mill rate would go right back up to that eleven seventy or higher, depending on how much more the budget would be based on cost increases. So again, had we gotten the right numbers in the first place, you would have all seen your bills at eleven seventy. So everybody's seeing a bill right now that's less than it otherwise would have been. And I know that's small comfort if you've got a dramatic increase, but it is the way the system works.
Nancy Porter, right?
You said you have a bill on your, on your desk for KRT. What was the total?
That bill is approximately half of what we have left, left to pay, about fifty-six thousand dollars.
So what was the total bill for the whole thing?
The whole thing was three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, that's pretty good for somebody who didn't do their job.
Yeah, Bill Crandall, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. One, this was a pretty quick notice for a meeting, so we probably would have had more people here if it had been a couple of weeks. So, but I did want to point out that the land values are what, what affects a lot of people. Because just in the profit values I had from their assessment from KRT, there was a three hundred and seventy-seven percent increase. There was a, excuse me, land, three hundred and seventy-seven percent, and then a two hundred and seventy-one percent, a four hundred and nine percent, and an eight hundred and forty-six percent, one and a half an acre land. So there's, there's been, those are the percent increases. So that's why the people with the left flags and landowners are gonna be really hurt by this type of thing. And I'm not sure what the assessor can do to change that.
Do we realize there's an exasperated feeling, temperament here, no question can deny it. Understandably, fortunately or unfortunately, now your point of view, the article obviously is a more constricted focal point than some of the issues that are here. But it's always been the position of this chair that we get broad latitude of things. But I understand that we can't, there's some things we can't do anything about it, but it's interesting to talk about, just to say, but we'd want to point that out. Yes, Josh?
I think Erica can answer this, but I just want to make sure it's clear in my mind, and maybe I'm not reading it right based off the statement of facts. So if the audience tonight voted down the seven hundred thousand, what would the mill rate be with the six hundred thousand? Because it says eleven seven to cover the twenty twenty-five budget.
Yeah, the eleven seventy is not with the six hundred thousand. So it would be somewhat less than that. I don't have the exact number. I would have to have Frank redo the sheets. I'm not an assessor. I do want to make that clear. I understand kind of the big picture of assessing, how individual properties got valued and what the different methodologies are is way beyond what I am trained to do. So, but for the calculation, I would have to have Frank come back and re-calculate that.
Bill Crandall?
Just one more quick question. You had talked about, I think it was two point three at the meeting, but you said two point two million tonight. And one point three million will be done by the seven hundred thousand, the six hundred thousand. And where was the rest of that, that other million coming from?
That was from raising the mill rate to the ten fifty.
Okay, that was, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions.
Could you just speak up a little bit?
Sorry. So my understanding of budgets and mill rates, like you knew what, or the budget was known, like you knew you needed X amount of dollars. And even though the numbers were faulty, we still knew that we were applying this money towards this budget. So I'm not sure how, if we know what our budget is and we're still applying, we need X amount of dollars, and we're spreading it over these numbers. I'm looking at the final page of your commitment book. How do we need more money? Because we know, we knew what we needed to raise. Why are we looking to raise more? It should have been all raised in here, right?
The commitment book shows the new adjusted mill rate. It doesn't show the nine eighty-one. And what you get to calculate a mill rate is a tax rate calculator form that is produced by the state of Maine. You have to plug in your total real estate value.
Right.
Your total personal property value, which is your business equipment. And then you have to plug in a value of property in homestead and a value of personal property that gets the business equipment tax exemption. Those four numbers, you take the first two and add them together, and then you subtract Betty, and you subtract homestead, well, seventy-five percent of those because that's what the state reimburses. And that then says, this is the amount of money you have left that you have to raise in taxes. There's no way we can know, because our budget, we, we put in that budget number. We needed to raise twelve point five.
You just spent, this, you're authorized to spend twelve point five?
Right. So, but those numbers, those numbers, if they're wrong, the numbers at the top of that spreadsheet.
Still the valuation, but you're still needing, you're still raising the twelve million dollars, right? As far as like, even though you're getting, you're, you're, are you saying your, your homestead was wrong?
Yes.
Okay, so if the homestead was wrong.
It meant that we took too much.
Why, why are we, is it, was it lower or was it higher?
It was about ten times higher than it should have been.
Okay, so if, if there's more exemptions allowed, why are we not going through the tax book and supplementing billing all of the people that were over-exempted? So if people weren't qualifying for an exemption, why are we not supplementing, sending those people a supplemental bill for the exemption they were authorized?
They never got authorized that exemption.
So they were authorized exemptions?
No. You're confusing the tax rate calculator with sending the actual bills.
No, not.
Nobody, that number, the homestead number that was wrong?
That's right here.
That about, three hundred and eighty-some million never went on the tax bills.
So I'm, so you're missing three hundred and eighty-seven dollar, million dollars. So there's three hundred, three hundred million dollars worth of exemptions that people didn't receive? Is that what you're telling me?
No. And I think this forum right here is a really hard place to try and discuss this. If you would like to call me.
I understand tax billing.
Unfortunately, though, what you're saying shows that you're not understanding, we're not talking together. So if we could, if we could sit down together.
So homestead exemptions. So you're, you're saying that there are people, say I'm a taxpayer in Farmington, are you saying that the bulk of that three hundred million dollars is not stated in the tax exemption?
That is correct. It only exists on paper, on the first paper that was wrong.
So then there are people that didn't receive an exemption that need to get one, is that what you're saying?
No, no. When the bills went out, they were correct as far as whatever exemptions people qualified for.
Okay. So, so when I brought my bill, so are, are you saying that the numbers in the commitment book are strong on your tax commitment paper? Like you use those wrong?
No, because we had to redo it. We had to redo the tax commitment. They redid it when we discovered the error. So the first tax rate form that we filled out came out with a rate of nine eighty-one. But when we actually produced the bills, we realized that was only gonna raise ten million something, not the twelve point five that we needed.
So I'm sorry to commemorate this to that. Is anybody else confused by this?
No, no. KRT gave the town the wrong number.
So KRT had exemptions that were not there, and they're, they're saying that people didn't get them?
No. KRT doesn't actually do homestead exemptions, but they never said that to us. They gave us a spreadsheet that has a column called exemptions. And that totaled up to three hundred and eighty-some million dollars. Okay?
Okay.
Our assessor has never done a revaluation. I am not an assessor. So when we ask KRT to give us a homestead value, and the only answer they give us is the numbers are in the spreadsheet, and they don't say, oh, by the way, you have to calculate the homestead. We're not questioning it because we don't know that KRT is not giving us the numbers that we asked for. But those numbers do not correlate to any individual taxpayer or any individual bill. They are an aggregate. And what those numbers actually are, which we didn't figure out till this week, is the value of the tax exempt property that's out there. This town has about thirty percent exempt property. It has nothing to do with the homestead value.
So this number here in your commitment book.
Is correct.
Is correct. So the sixteen million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand is correct?
Yes, unless there were any that were missed. And again, anybody who should have gotten an exemption and didn't usually calls the office and we correct it.
So the numbers you used in the tax commitment were three hundred million?
Three hundred and eighty-six or something like that.
Okay.
In the first one.
All right.
Three hundred and thirty-two.
So I guess I just, you know, I feel like that's material information in determining this. Like, I don't know.
It's material information on how we got the wrong mill rate the first time.
I don't know how anybody could not look at a tax commitment book and not double-check it with a tax rate sheet. Like, how could no one do that?
Because we didn't have access to the information.
And how, how do you not know that, that, I don't know, that's, that someone is pulling through the, the edging set exemptions and compare that to what we're considering?
Wait, wait, just a second. I personally find this to be fascinating. But not everybody is enthralled as I am about it, unfortunately. I would love to be part of this dialogue. I think maybe if this could be deferred to it.
I'll send them.
One on one, that's all. I like what you're trying to say, and you're trying to say, and it's interesting to me. But not everybody treats this as recreation the way I do. So unfortunately, go ahead, up there. You're next.
It seems to me, I understand people's concerns, and I appreciate that. But this is not the time to discuss, discussing all these items. There is a due process, which the town manager and the selectman have pointed out to people time and time again. So I think we need to just stop this discussion and get to the reason why we're really here tonight and not grab this really long forever.
Well, Jeff?
Just on that, back to the topic at hand, with the seven hundred thousand, I guess I just would say, I would. just would say I would recommend not going down that path because all we are doing is robbing Peter to pay Paul. Sorry. To me, it's gonna, I would think the mill rate is gonna be right around eleven-ish if we, but that means obviously the town would have to send all the tax bills back out, but I just, it doesn't seem wise in my mind, but that's just me.
Who would question?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, Mr. Dennis, on radio.
Thank you for coming. My job is to listen to what you have to say. It's nice to know that by my count, we've got about sixty-five people here. At the last town meeting we had where we voted the budget for this, we had seventy-eight people there and not one stinking question was asked about the budget. Next year, with the budget process coming through, there will be some pain regardless of what way we go here tonight. And I would certainly love to see you all there. The word that I heard again and again and again is land, land values, the account, the amount of land and the people that are impacted. Four hundred percent increase in the property, if it was twenty thousand and went to eighty thousand, that isn't necessarily reflective of the dollar amount that somebody had paid. But the, the question is, we hired a firm to do a job. They did a revaluation. We put it off, we kicked that can down the road for a number of years because nobody wanted to go through that pain. We lost money from the state. We lost on the homestead exemptions. Last year, your homestead exemption was worth nineteen thousand some odd dollars instead of twenty-five. So you've been paying some of that in your tax bills going forward. We are in a situation now where, yes, you can do nothing tonight and we'll go to the eleven seventy give or take. There may be some decrease in what that total number is, but it's going to be more than what you pay. And you will get a supplemental bill. And those people that are already hurting are going to be hurting more. Because to file for an abatement, you have to show that there is something wrong on your record card. And I don't believe the majority of the record cards are wrong. There are some that appear to have some egregious errors in them. We need to address that. And there is a process. You've got to pay that bill to, to follow that process and it goes through three or four steps. And that may affect the value that we have next year in going to set the tax rate. Again, I don't believe that we are talking substantial amounts, that the, the values are going to change by thirty or forty or fifty percent of what the assessed value was. We hired a legitimate firm with a national reputation. They were the only bidders that were willing to do it because everybody in the state now is scrambling to do these revaluations because they ignored doing it in the past. If we had been doing it every five or eight or ten years, it would have been less onerous when it finally comes time to do that, which is now. And going forward, hopefully we're not going to wait another ten years to do that. But I think at this point, we are disappointed in how it turned out. It's unfortunate. We are not necessarily happy with the results and I don't know where we're going to go with that. But we certainly are exploring options that we have going forward. But what we need to know tonight is, do you want to set a tax rate somewhere in the middle to help those neighbors that are struggling to pay their bills at the ten fifty? Or are we going to take all of that pain on this year to mitigate what's going to happen next year, which gives you a year to start to plan for an increase coming in down the road and gives you a reason to go to town meeting, to hold everybody's feet to the fire, to make sure that we are doing a bare bones budget in order to mitigate that going forward. That's all that I have to say. Thank you for coming. Stay tuned.
Other thoughts, comments, or observations? Go ahead, yes.
Yeah, just one quick note. I'm so glad that you mentioned that part about the delay in this process in terms of twenty-one years after it was last done because that is an important part of this. One of my questions are going to be, why, why did that happen? But that's not really for tonight's discussion, so that's another deal.
Yes, go ahead.
I have just one more thought. Has the select board thought about delaying the switch over to the fiscal year until next year maybe, until this mess can be straightened out to avoid another tax year with a bunch of errors and issues?
We did discuss it at one of our last meetings. We just thought it was just proven just to continue with, with what we were doing.
I, I think as a taxpayer, I think it would be, and just my opinion, which I'm entitled to, to put that off another year until you know that everything is situated. I've actually gone through the tax book with the exception of the last two hundred, two hundred pages. And I've seen quite a few mistakes and I don't really know anything about Farmington per se. But I have seen homestead exemptions where one individual was getting, two individuals were getting two homestead exemptions. So, and then there was another individual that was getting a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homestead exemption. So I, I think that it would give the tax assessor time, which I'm sure he's doing very best, to go through the material that he needs rather than having two years so close together that are just such a ball of yarn.
Go ahead, Ben.
Is there any estimate about what the new mill rate might be for the next half year? And then the year after that, if we're going to from ten point five to?
It's a crapshoot.
No.
Roll the dice.
And, no, you can't, you can't do that.
Part of it probably depends on what the school district and the county are doing.
Fifty percent of the budget.
It's not just a municipal budget, you know? Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, a couple of things. I agree with the delay you're finding. I'd still think it would be good to delay the half a year thing. And I really still think, especially so that taxpayers won't be even more confused, because that's how I feel like it's going to be. But that's a decision for you guys to make. Just a real quick note to Dennis on the land value. So that was, just that one that was eight hundred and forty-six percent increase, it, when I went to the KRT, it was cut to four hundred and twenty-four percent. And that, that land value originally was three thousand seven hundred for a half an acre of land. The half of that land is in wetlands that I can't do anything with. So, you know, fifteen thousand seven hundred, I paid eleven thousand five hundred for that with a garage on it not that long ago. So I just, I think KRT had some interesting ways of doing things anyway. So the people with land, I think are really the ones that are going to be needed to look at for abatements.
If you're looking for an argument, that won't start one.
Okay, then. Sounds good.
Dennis, you always have an apt comment about that. Anybody else? Go ahead. Yes, Dick Morton?
My initial reaction was, was the same as Josh's, that we should just go with the correct math and go with the eleven dollars and seventy cents. But I, I became convinced that, that we can make it a little easier for some of those folks who are facing an increased tax bill that they weren't anticipating. And I also think that the, that the six-month budget is going to give us an opportunity to maybe spread this pain out a little more than we otherwise were going to be able to as we move up towards the higher mill rate in the next year. So although I agree that the math would say we just, we just take the pain, go with eleven seventy because that's the correct number, this is maybe the one time when we're faced with a situation where we actually can modify the mill rate and give somebody, some folks some relief on the front end of this. And so I, that's why I support it and that's why I hope you'll support it tonight.
Yes, go ahead, Trudy.
Just a question to that, like there's quite a few errors in the, the eval. So I understand we have to pay a bill now and then we'd have to pay a bill in like April or March or something, correct?
It'll probably be more like late May or early June.
Okay. Well, they will whoever have time enough to fix all these errors between now and then. Because if there's a lot of errors, they're going to pay the errors now, then they're going to pay the errors again. Will that give you guys enough time to fix everything before that? Because he indicated that you have to go through three different boards and all that and it will take time.
You may. That is the process because there is a local appeals board for the values after the assessor. And then the county, you can go to them and then you can go to court in order to do that.
Some of that can depend on how soon taxpayers, if they want to do it, file for the abatement. Because you have like about, what is it, a hundred and eighty days to file for an abatement from the time of the commitment. So people file it more quickly, then Trudy, you would have a resolution likely a little bit earlier than if you wait until the last minute. That's all. Go ahead, Josh.
Just to follow up, it wouldn't be eleven seven if it was voted down. Because the six hundred thousand in the statement of facts was already paid towards us.
It's going to be eleven two.
Right.
Eleven three.
They split the difference between the two.
I said around eleven. So I'm just saying, so everybody understands if they got voted down, we're only talking a point seven, point eight more. So instead of saying eleven seven, it's really not eleven seven.
Okay, it's eleven two. So somebody's bill's going to go up a hundred dollars, somebody else's bill's going to go up two hundred dollars from what they got the other day.
Nancy Porter?
Yeah, I, I have a house over in West Farmington and it's been taxed anyway. So I kept thinking about it. When I, when I paid for my house insurance, I paid for it at a lower level. So I called up the insurance company and told them what was going on and my next year's fire insurance, house insurance is going to increase by two-thirds percent of, it's going to be two-thirds more for my house insurance. And I thought it was high enough, it was left. So, so then if I decide to sell it, my transfer tax is going to double because my, you're paying your transfer tax on the amount of the sale. So if you think that I'm going to sell it for a hundred thousand, you're nuts. But how many people can actually get their, the value of the house past abate appraiser? My guess is not many. So if you need to pay for a down payment, say you go into a farmer's home or a main state housing, you pay fifty-five percent down, it's going to double or triple, which then means you don't have enough money for down payment. Or by the time you get to negotiating your, the amount that you want to spend it for, it's kicked you out of their loan program. So I think that we are in a real tough situation because my house certainly is not worth what the town has it taxed for.
Josh, can I make a motion to move the question?
Wow, overwhelming. It has been moved and second, third, fourth, fifth, anyway, that, the question. What that means is that if the motion is successful, that we would cut off debate. It's a preliminary motion. It's not on the merits of the question as to whether this article is approved or not. It's not a debatable motion either, but it requires a two-thirds vote. So if you're in favor of stopping debate, you can raise your hand and we'll see where this comes up. If you're against stopping debate, put your hand up. Any opinion in the chair, unless challenged, it appears to be the apprehension of this chair that two-thirds of the people have voted to cut off debate. That brings us to the question. It's a short one. It's pretty well focused, but I'll just read it quickly. Shall the town vote to approve the use of seven hundred thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance for the board of selectmen to reduce the amount of property tax we collect for the fund here? Two thousand twenty-five budget, an effort to stabilize the tax rate in a manner that's consistent with prudent fiscal management. If you are in favor of that, you can raise your hand. If you happen to be against it, raise your hand. There is some dissent, but it does appear that this particular article has passed. The benediction of this meeting may now be pronounced. Service is over. You can go in peace.